So when do you leave?
The first of August is Friday.
Actually, actually, the second is Friday. First is a Friday. The first of August is Friday.
Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the July 16, 2025, meeting of the Board of Education to order. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of business is the adoption of the agenda for today's board meeting. The July 16, 2025 agenda has been distributed to all members. Are there any corrections, additions, or changes? If not, the agenda will be adopted as presented. At this time, we have an opportunity for public comments. There are no public comments tonight. So we will continue and welcome our superintendent to share some comments.
Okay, so we just, one week ago today, we were here. So good evening, Board, staff, and members of the community. I'd like to start off with our cell phone policy, just to provide some information on some family information sessions. We're inviting families to attend one of our upcoming family information sessions to learn more about the new cell phone policy and ask questions. It's important that our families partner with us to get a better understanding of the why behind the policy and actively support its implementation. We will review expectations, communication procedures, and key details of the policy. Current sessions that we have scheduled that are on our website, Monday, August 4th at 9:00 a.m., 9:00 a.m. here at Family Community Engagement Center, they're here at Liberty, Thursday, August 7th at 6:00 p.m., again here at the Faith Center, which is Liberty. And then Monday, August 11th at 9:00 a.m., which will be a virtual session, and that link will be provided. We will also record at least one of the sessions and make it available to our families who are not able to attend. Additional sessions will also be forthcoming. Summer night, just a huge thank you to Dr. Hedley, the IED department, our safety team, the Schenectady Police Department, Schenectady County, and then a special to Mr. Curry and Mr. Russo, members of our restorative practice team, and of course, our students and families. Together, we create a safe, welcoming, and joyful space during summer nights right here at Liberty, where our students were able to come into this space as they then went out and enjoyed the evening. We had well over 330 students that checked in here with our staff, as well as members of the community, and embraced just an amazing opportunity for them to kind of just enjoy the evening. I also want to share that our Code of Conduct, as well as our safety plan, is out for public comment. The 30-day public comment period is currently open for both the district Code of Conduct, as well as the district safety plan. These documents are available on our website and shared through our social media channels. We encourage everyone to review and provide some feedback. I also like to share that we have free haircuts on July 18th. Say a big thank you to Brian the Brick, who will be providing free haircuts to students on Friday, July 18th at 1:30 p.m. outside the Pat Riley Sports Center, the FA parking lot over at the high school. We appreciate his generosity and commitment to our community. Also wanted to share our Farm to Wheels program and pop-up pantries. Farm to Wheel mobile market is rolling on Tuesdays and Fridays. These schedules are available on our website and social media. In addition, the pop-up and shop pantries is open every Friday from 3:00 to 5:00 in front of the Pat Riley Center. So families, you can swing by and get groceries, as well as set up haircuts for your scholars. Last is our pre-K opening. We still have a few openings for our four-year-old pre-K program at selected locations. Applications are available on our website. Please note, children must turn four by December 1st to be eligible. And then last, summer theater camp performance. Our summer theater camp, students will perform Go Fish on Friday, August 1st at 6:00 p.m. in the Black Box Theater at the high school. We hope that you can join us for that celebration.
Thank you Superintendent Cotto. Now we will welcome Board members. Board Member Kathy?
I had the opportunity today to visit the TSS Institute at the Century House and listened in on one of the breakout sessions with Dr. Dustin Springer. And so that was informative, and I'm going to try to go tomorrow too, just the same.
Okay, thank you Board Member Kathy. Board Member Amanda?
I have my own statement.
Board Member Alexandra?
Hi. I missed our reorganization meeting, so I just wanted to take an opportunity to say how grateful I am to serve again with you wonderful people and serve this district, our students, our parents, our educators. I'm very honored to serve in this capacity, and I'm just looking forward to what's next.
Thank you Board Member Alexandra, and we're happy that you're part of the team as well. And Board Member Vivian?
No comments tonight.
Board Member Jamaica?
Hey, y'all. Summer is in full swing. I know that the swim program is happening. It began, and it's a wonderful time for our kids to be able to learn how to swim and have water safety lessons. Also, I see a lot of our kids up at Central Park at that pool there, just having a good time, enjoying the summer. Unfortunately, not all of our children are enjoying the summer, because while summer night was fun for a lot of our kids, there were several of our children that did not have a good time. Three of them being handcuffed, one of them being assaulted by Schenectady police officers. And from that, me then learning about other children that have been assaulted by Schenectady police officers, including a young man who, two years ago, when he was 14, being assaulted by officers. And then the trauma that he's had since then, and it's not the only story that I've received. And so we're about to have a conversation about renewing the contract with the police department at a time where there's a reemergence of something that's been discussed over and over again, and that's the violent acts of police in our communities and why we should allow them to come inside our buildings. Because those young people that experienced what they did at summer night, it doesn't go away. Because the parents who, years ago, had that interaction, explained the trauma that their children still face every single day. And I look forward to hearing how the police department is going to address and ensure that we end the violence against our young people and just the violence in our communities overall, including the investigation into an officer that discharged their weapon while a child was having a mental health crisis back in May. So if we're going to ask for those officers, any officers, to be in our building, we should know what has been happening and what has been done to address the violence that has already happened against our students. That's all I have for that.
Thank you Board Member Jamaica. Vice President Mahalani?
I'll leave my own.
And I have no comments for tonight as well. The next item is the public service contract discussion. Chief Clifford and Chief Burns will provide an overview, followed by a brief statement from myself, and then board discussion. This contract, which includes a CEO language, is a sensitive topic, as we all know. We know that there are strong feelings from students, families, and staff, community members, and board members. Before we begin, I want to remind the Board our shared agreements to guide this conversation. We agree to maintain a focus on what's best for our students, one mic, one voice, ensure a safe space for all views to be expressed, treating each other and staff respectfully, more specifically showing kindness, courtesy, and politeness, make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening and considering with an open mind, while others are allowed to express their points of view even when one disagrees. At this time, I will welcome Deputy Superintendent DeCaprio.
Thank you, Board President Rivera. Good evening, respected Board of Education. Dr. Cotto, committee members live in person and online, or live stream. I'm very pleased, in partnership with our city services, Director of School Climate and Safety Jeff Russo, to present on the public services agreement that is in the board agenda for tonight. So as always, we'll engage with a brief, just presentations with our slide deck that we typically use for all of our presentations, starting off with our district vision, our tagline, and our organizational values at this point. You can probably oversight them. And with everything we do, our alignment, with every effort, every intentional decision is aligned to our four pillars. We work to evolve this from a document to something that lives and reads in all we do. So we talk about student graduate success, passionate people, our family and community partnerships, and our efficient systems and equitable resources. Those will be reflected at various points, should be reflected in the public services agreement. Beyond that, everything we do. Specifically tonight, you should have had the chance to take a look at the public safety agreement. I just wanted to highlight five enhancements. Four years ago, we engaged in the original contract with the police department specifically as a school district. This contract works from that, but expands partnership to the police department and the Schenectady Fire Department. Behind me are Chief Burns of the Fire Department and his leadership, as well as Chief Clifford and his leadership with the police department. This was done in collaboration with them. So of the five intentional moves, one is the integration of Fire Department services in the contract. We're also going to look at expanding the role and structure for our CEOs, community engagement officers. We're going to talk about some new collaborative programs and initiatives within that agreement, as well as clarified responsibilities and layers of protection. And then a shift in the body-worn camera, B M C footage protocol. That's all. I just wanted to uplift them in the agreement that you should have had access to prior to the meeting. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Director Russo, who will speak a little bit around shifting our language.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for having me here. I just wanted to speak briefly on some of the, sorry, let's go back. Joe sent me out for that one. I just want to speak briefly on some of the changes and shift in language that we had in the contract this time around. As Joe said, we've shifted from an agreement with police to more of a city service agreement. And so in shifting that, we wanted to shift on the language as well. In partnership with our public services departments, we've shifted away from punitive, zero-tolerance approaches toward a model rooted in partnership, support, and respect. Basically, we've tried to make it so that it's about engagement, it's about learning, it's about education. Our work center's student well-being addresses concerns about overpolicing and racial disparities and holds both the district and public safety accountable to the values of equity and educational purpose. Again, we're doing everything we can to make this a relationship that combines education with just a general, we want to provide pathways for our students now. We want to engage this in a way that is positive and productive. We're not trying to ever be punitive with what we're bringing into the school or putting in front of the kids. This more human-centered and collaborative language helps ensure that safety in our schools is not defined by force, but by relationships, trust, and shared responsibility. And I think that speaks to the fact that we went through the contract line by line, really, and tried to make it so that the contract reflected what we wanted, which is a positive approach to this relationship that we have, that we've been growing, that we've been trying to build. And I think that we see it every day. I think we see the fruits of that every day in the fact that, you know, when the police respond to things in the schools, they are able to let our safety staff handle the situation as best they can before intervening. We have seen examples of that, but I definitely want to welcome both chiefs to speak to what they're bringing to the pathways area of this and what we're looking to enhance as far as moving forward. So Chief Burns and Chief Clifford, either one of you guys want to come up and speak to what we're looking to add as far as this contract goes with pathways and some of the things we've done.
Anytime.
Thank you, Burns, for putting that on the spot. But yeah, just what we did was we took, we took a whole bunch of things that were individually billed by the city, some billed regularly, some not billed regularly. We tried to combine a lot of the different services that, and put it all together in one contract with the city, so that city services just becomes a thing that we can then work with educationally to create pathways to those city services and then learn about different things in the city. So with that said, Chief, if you just want to speak to how we are looking to expand pathways with the police?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So it was really the direction of Mayor McCarthy. He asked that we do a global agreement that covered everything at the police department level and also at the city level, including the Fire Department. And prior to this, what we were doing with the community engagement officers, that was a separate agreement. And then anytime an officer would be needed for an extracurricular event, that would be billed separately to the school district. In addition to that, false alarm bills would be billed to the school district. And I know that the Fire Department was having a separate billing. This agreement now brings everything together under one global agreement, with some understandings that, we're going to be covering any request by the school district for extracurricular activities where you may need additional resources from the police department, consistent with what we've been doing ongoing, where we're not being asked to do it every night. And same thing with the false alarm bills. We're going to continue to work closely with the district on why they're going off and that we're trying to fix it. But there'll be no billing to the school district when they go off. Again, as long as we make sure that they're not going off every night. So it's really just, again, working closer together on all services that the city is providing to the school district, in partnership with the school district, because we're also receiving some benefits from the school district on that behalf, both with our locating our drone to one of the district buildings and also utilizing the district's facilities, like the fields for what we do, community engagement activities with other members of the community.
How was everything?
Pathways, you could talk at all, maybe Lieutenant Dalton about what we're doing to help students find a career possible forward. I can probably, might be better.
You've really been leading this effort.
Good evening, this is CEO. So for pathways, we've been working on some things for a couple of years. And what we're trying to do in the contract here is now formalize them. So I think since 2018, me and now Chief Kelly, but formerly Lieutenant Kelly, with Schenectady Police Department formed the LEAP Club. So in the LEAP Club, we've been introducing students to police officers, to judges, to everybody in the criminal justice world and any job that they may be interested in. And one of the things that we did this year was hold a school trip for them. And on that trip, we introduced multiple different career paths. And again, we let them have, view some court, come into the police department, talk to detectives, talk to patrol officers, talk to court officers, talk to prosecutors, talk to defense attorneys, talk to public defense attorneys. Judge McGirl was involved. And then we had lunch with the students, and it was really a great day. But what we were doing with that is introducing them to all the possibilities. And then we're teaching them what you need to do to get to those possibilities, what you need to, choices you need to be making now, what you need to be doing at school, what type of college you should be looking at, or if college is needed, what type of technical school you can go to. So we want to take that and build upon it and make it official. And I'll let the Fire Department speak about it too, but they want to do the same thing with some EMS programs. We also have a student right now who's sort of in the middle of this. She came to LEAP Club years ago. She's now engaging with the police department, took the civil service test, wants to be a police officer. And Dr. Cotto and us at the police department are actively working with her to try and get her there and make her dreams come true. So we're trying to inject that to the contract as well.
What is the word name of the club? I'm not catching it. LEAP or?
L E E P. The student's name did. It's Law Enforcement Engagement Program.
Thank you. That's all.
You're welcome. Thanks, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Also, Dave Preston, who's not here tonight, is working on the CTE pathway. So it'll be part of the high school. It will be one of the choices students have moving forward. And Chief, well, I think one of the things I was excited about, knowing that some of our elementary students routinely get to see the Fire Department and the trucks and all the excitement that comes with that, I think that this agreement will help us make sure that all of our elementary students get to see that on an annual basis by building it into their curriculum in elementary school, so that the Fire Department can help by making that possible, bringing it to all 11 elementary schools every year for fire education. And then on top of that, work towards a pathway with the high school similar to the police. So Chief, if you want to speak to?
Sure. Good evening, Board members. Dr. Cotto? I'm really excited to be here. I think this is a great opportunity. I appreciate being brought on board by not only Mayor McCarthy, but Chief Clifford. So the pathways, I think that's really exciting. Right now, the Fire Department is running 12 members short. And to put that in perspective, we run at 20 a day. So we're a little over half a shift short, and we just can't find the people to hire. So having a direct pathway to the Fire Department or emergency services, and it doesn't just have to be the Fire Department. It could be Mohawk Ambulance, it could be the police department, it could be the Fire Department. NIST unit runs short. To provide that pathway with maybe an E M T class, we've had these discussions before with the school district, and we kind of left it on the vine a little bit, because there's a lot, it's a big lift. It's a huge lift to have an E M T program. It's 200 hours of instruction for the year. You need what's called a C I C that oversees the program. You have to get it approved by D O H. There's a curriculum, but you just got to fit it within the hours that the school district can provide to students each week. I think together, partnering together, we can accomplish that, right? Where every weakness, there's an opportunity. And my weakness is getting enough employees, and quality employees, and I think they're right here in the school district, right here in the city. So that's the hard part of this for us, is to do that lift. The easy part is we provide about 375 man-hours, Fire Department personnel to the school district a year. There's about 50 visits in October for Fire Prevention Month, and that's where the kids get to come out and see the fire apparatus. They talk to our Fire Prevention Unit. We've had some great feedback and some positive results from children that have taken those lessons away, and have come back and have saved their family from getting out of the house. And like, I remember what they told us, and have a meeting, have a fire drill, all that educational component there. So that will be included here. The billable false alarms of the Fire Department started rolling out earlier this year. That will be getting billing for in the second half of the year. That will be included here. We can work with the school district when we have maybe a persistent false alarm, like, hey, maybe get these detectors checked out. The guys are really, the guys and girls are really good at maybe narrowing some stuff down for the alarm company. And then the other big part is to provide some education for the personnel for the school district. And that's with Stop the Bleed. We had positive results not so long ago with the school district personnel helping a student and saving their life with the Stop the Bleed program. We can provide some A E D training, some C P R training, and some basic first aid. But I'm really excited about the pathway for the E M T and given emergency services. I think that's a great opportunity. And with that, I'd like to even go a little bit farther and maybe provide some education on how to take a civil service test, right? There's a way to take that test and what they're looking for and how they ask those questions and how those answers are expected to come back to you. So if we can couple that in there, I think we have a great opportunity. Thank you for talking.
And I think the final piece of this was just to take a quick slideshow of a few of the images that we captured in the last few years with our pilot program and then our first contract with the CEO program. I think that, you know, they, the ones assigned to the school have really bought in. And every single person who's come through the school has really bought in. And that's what's made it successful, is the fact that we've had consistent buy-in for the officers that were assigned here. I think that, you know, the one right in the center there, Lunch with Sergeant Romfeld, that's a regular occurrence at Central Park. You know, I mean, he has a whole following at lunchtime. They want to come eat lunch with him. I think one of the biggest things where I saw this year, the impact of one of the ones earlier, was Officer Kopezinski reading to a classroom, or he's here in the street, but he routinely goes up to Hamilton. And when I went to the Hamilton moving up ceremony for kindergarten, anybody who was there, out of the 40 kids or so that moved up, I would say 25 to 30 either wanted to be a fireman or a policeman. And I think it was a direct result of a lot of the interactions that they've had, just being around and really creating that positivity around it. So, you know, I think it was encouraging, and I think that what we would like to see from the, you know, from this contract and moving forward is more engagement, more engagement. We really can't stress that enough as the engagement.
So that concludes the brief presentation. What about the questions, comments?
Board members, any questions? Yep. Board Member Kathy, then Board Member Vivian?
Mine's not really a question, just sharing a little information in my travels and so forth. I believe, and Vivian, you know this, Shenandoah has an E M T program for Chief Burns. And I believe they're doing it on their premises. They've had it at least a year. I know I presented a championship change a year ago, so I think it's several years old. So it might bear some information for helping set it up.
Yeah, and I think that's where Dave Preston was researching what curriculums were out there, what programs were in existence right now.
I think they had five people that they had, you know, passed at that point. That was summer two ago, so.
Okay, that's great, Kevin. Thank you.
Board Member Vivian?
Chief Clifford mentioned separate billing previously for police officers being at extracurricular events, false alarm responses, et cetera. When you say built separately, who was it built to?
The district gets built for those things.
So do you happen to have a ballpark figure on how much the school district had to pay separately for those responses on top of the contract?
I would have to get with Terry Mulley and with Budget Office to come up with a number on that.
I'm only asking because I just wanted to know if it was possible to verify one of the purposes behind this contract, when you're saying that you're building everything in. Obviously, the goal you're moving to save the school district money. So if we paid an additional $200,000 per se in separate billing since the last, since the contract was first ratified, physically, based on what you're telling me, if that were the case, it would make sense? Is my train of thought in the right direction?
Yeah, I mean, again, I don't want to put ballpark numbers on it, because I don't have the bills. So I think that, you know, the city billing has been, at times, it's right on top of it. Other times, it's been a little bit sluggish behind it. So, you know, it was, looking at it on the snapshot was hard to take a picture of, because sometimes quarter-four billing was for quarter-one.
Sure.
So I think, to speak to it generally, we asked the Fire Department to put together kind of a cost analysis, and they came up to around $40,000 to $50,000 for the services they provide, like their training hours for Stop the Bleed. They do certify all the people on the Saika team with that training, with the A E D, C P R, first aid, they assist with that. And then when we looked at false alarms as a, for instance, you know, I think the persistent false alarms from police are $150 each. At one point, we owed, I think, $15,000 and a quarter for false alarms. Like, people don't recognize how often alarms go off in the buildings, right? So, you know, I think, in total, yes, the idea is that this is a savings for the school district to be able to do that. I think on top of that, when you look at the personnel costs, I think that the personnel costs are much higher than what, you know, than what we do pay for. And so I think that it comes down to, you know, what's fair in that regard. So I think that that's one of the items listed there.
Yeah, I believe Chief also mentioned 375 man-hours provided to the school district each year. That was previously billed separately to the school district.
So like, when we have a football game and we have four officers aside in the game, they're all billed individually. So that is a bill sent to the school. And as a, for instance, you know, we had a football game where we got, you know, say, a $5,000 bill for the four officers that were there for the football game. So, I mean, those things, you know, they add up quickly, you know, when you talk about benefits in the overtime. And then I think, you know, there's been times where they've tried to help us, we've tried to help them. And I think there's times when they haven't billed it, when they could have. And I think that, you know, this is just a global, you know, we won't worry about any of that. If we can just kind of package it, it works for everybody.
And last question, just for the sake of transparency and simplicity, what is the overall purpose behind having the police department at sporting events that we're hosting?
Public safety.
Any specifics or any examples to kind of paint a picture of the answer, why we determined that it was necessary?
I think anytime you put groups, you know, in the hundreds together, it's wise to have someone there from public safety just as a response to an emergency. I think that's pretty standard in most districts.
Um, I don't know if Chief is able to speak to, I don't know, does he recall there was a frequency of when the police department actually had to respond to an incident at a sporting event, or as opposed to them just being there as a presence?
I mean, you come. I've been on the job for 23 years, and as long as I've been there, we've had police officers at football games. Every football game that I've gone to, in other municipalities, there's police officers there. And I think that the purpose is that they are able to address issues before they become big issues. And Lieutenant, if you had a little bit more knowledge about what?
And Lieutenant, if you had a little bit more knowledge about the exact examples of when we are there at games, whether they're utilized.
Yeah, I know, I was just looking over years past data today and some of the data that we've presented to you guys, where we've had fights and use of force incidents, it's usually at those types of games. It's been, you know, the one I'm thinking of is Albany was playing against Schenectady and a bunch of kids came from out of town and attacked a bunch of people here. Sergeant Potters was there to, you know, put an end to that. And then aside from those types of incidents, there's really lower level stuff that we help with, which is car accidents, traffic control, getting people in and out of parking lots safely, dealing with the surrounding streets and all that sort of stuff.
Okay. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Vice President Noam.
Yes, so I wanted to actually piggyback off Vivian's, on Board Member Vivian's question. So I wanted to go into the contract, right? So for this year going through the next three years, it's gonna be a $500,000 agreement. This is $200,000 more than what it was previously in the prior contract. This is only for the six CEOs. This has nothing to do with the fire department.
It has, it's altogether, altogether. It includes.
So altogether, inclusive, but the, the, so can you explain the breakdown? That $500,000 is not for the CEOs solely?
No, it's a lump sum for every, every service from the city. So.
So do we know what's going, sorry, I gotta keep to the three questions, but do we know how that's broken down? Because I don't think it's broken down in the contract explicitly.
I don't, I don't have that right now. I'm gonna have to ask Terry Mulley to help me with breaking down numbers. I think that, you know, the Chief, Chief Burns would have to provide us an hour leave for the 10 guys that came to, you know, do the training. And I don't know, we've ever tried to break that, break that down.
Okay. And then this will be my last question, I was just curious. So again, with the $500,000, so an increase of $200,000, we will have a 2% annual increase each subsequent academic year according to the agreement. Are we, like, I, I just wanna ask for the public, for everyone else to kind of understand, do we blanketly have a 2% increase for our teachers or any of the staff on that? Like they're getting the same, right?
Across our collective bargaining units, there's, it might be exactly the same, but we always, yes, we factor in percentage.
Perfect, thank you.
Board Member Jamaica?
Hey y'all. I mean, because I'm just doing it on purpose now. So you, you talked about how the language was changed to be more human-centered and collaborative and positive approach. But we are talking about the police department specifically, which their practices and policies are based in violence. So while the language in our contract says this is a human-centered and this is how we interact with people and we do TCIS training, that's not actually the foundation of policing. So why is it that we should believe, especially in light of recent events, that the police are not violent actors just because of the language in the contract? I mean, I, I guess I'm really asking the Chief because it's his officers. Chief Clifford.
Do you want to speak to it, Chief, or?
So my, my question is partially in light of the, the recent events that we know of, as well as the historical nature of policing and the violence that it's born from, why is it that we should believe the language in the contract is enough for us to feel as if the violence of policing is not something for us to be concerned with?
Well, what I'll say here tonight is that what you've been speaking about the other night is incorrect. I personally watched all the videos that are available and that young man was not assaulted. Didn't happen. As a matter of fact, his mother was out at the police station later that night thanking officers for the way it was handled. The other thing I'll say is that I've been a police chief for nine years now. I have a reputation that I believe carries some weight in this community where I will not allow my officers to harm anybody in this community. If they do, they will be held accountable.
Okay. So I, I mean, you should just stay because really all my, my questions are for, for you, Chief Clifford. And I guess this is a follow-up to that because your, your assertion that an officer that assaults anyone is held accountable, but there isn't any public transparency around it. We were told there would be an investigation to an officer that fired their police weapon during an interaction with a child who was having a mental health crisis. And that investigation may very well have happened, but we don't know what the results are. You're standing here telling us that the videos that you watched, that there wasn't an assault on that child, but we watched the Gazette video of how many officers were on top of that child. So while your definition and legal terms may lead you to believe it wasn't an assault, we, the public, watched the video and how many grown men were on top of a 14-year-old. So again, as a follow-up, why should we continue to trust what you're saying when we have our own experiences and we don't have any transparency around accountability of officers? I just spoke to a mom last night, two years ago. So under your leadership, her 14-year-old son was brutalized. And I absolutely believe her. And that child is still experiencing trauma. So why then, if like, there, there's just not enough transparency, but you're asking us to take you at your word that officers don't assault people? And if somebody did, they would be held accountable? We have no evidence to that.
But we have transparency. We have a civilian police review board that operates in this city. I mean, I don't know what more you would ask. I'm, I'm not gonna sit here and, and litigate and debate what happened the other night because it is still being investigated, what led up to that event. What, what I will say is that we have an oversight of the police department that doesn't just end with me. There's a Commissioner of Public Safety who's a retired Supreme Court Justice. There's the mayor. There is a civilian police review board. I mean, we have multiple layers of oversight. And what I will tell all of you here tonight is that I'm, I welcome being called in to speak to you privately if you ever have any concerns. Anytime with the officers that are there. I have full confidence in them and what they're doing. I think that our two-year history in that school district speaks for itself. And I disagree that we're out there assaulting children. We are out there protecting children. Some children act like adults. And as the police, sometimes the police have to have the authority to take them into control. That's just the reality that we live in. That's just, that's just the way it is.
And I wanna just ease my final question. Because I do wanna make sure. Because that was two. It was one and a follow-up, so that's gonna be my final question. I was keeping track. Why are we asking police officers to promote social behavior when it's neither their role nor trained social workers, counselors, psychologists, and restorative justice practitioners? For the Chief specifically, pro-social behavior is not, to my knowledge, part of their, their training. So why should that be their responsibility inside the contract that we're signing?
It is part of our training. We, we probably spend more hours per day dealing with social issues, social problems with our community, much more than social workers do. We are trained on it. We're trained extensively on it, both the police academy and, and service training. And I think we're pretty good at it. I really do. And again, I could explain to you in more depth, speaking to our training sergeant, exactly what we do for crisis intervention training, for being out there, engaging with the community so that the community is part of the solution, that we don't have to, we, we don't wanna ever use force on anybody. We use it as a last resort. And, and we're out there, and I, I believe we're doing a pretty good job of it. Our numbers speak for themselves. I don't have them here with me tonight, but our, our instances of complaints are down. Our instances of using force against members of this community are down.
I'm glad to hear that there's new training because when I spoke to the sergeant two years ago, he didn't mention any of that pro-social and restorative training. So I'm glad to hear that there are more trainings than there were before.
It's, it's certainly a, a result of, of the police reform of 2020. I'm not gonna mislead anybody about that. But for the last five years, we've been doing extensive training, more training than we have time to do. Costs us a lot of money in overtime paid for officers to do this training.
Board Member Amanda, and then Board Member Vivian?
I just was hoping you could quickly reiterate some of the ways that having police officers in the school has helped. I know I might be missing, I'm sure I'm missing some, but I know one of the ones that stuck out most in my mind was just, if someone does call 911 and doesn't go to one of the officers that's present, that officer can get there, evaluate the situation, and prevent a whole city's worth of police cars coming, causing stress and concern and distractions. Is there anything else other than that where you have seen, or I mean, anyone who's been in the schools have seen of, like a, a positive influence?
I, I want, I will say, if you went back three years ago, when we had an incident in a building and somebody did call 911, oftentimes the police cars would respond and, and we might end up with 10 police cars there. And, and it was different because the Chief and largely because of Lieutenant Dalton, they kinda revamped their system to where when the 911 call goes in from the school, it goes out on their radio, which their CEOs listen to in the buildings. So if they're able to handle a call within the building and can cancel everybody else right there on the radio, they do it. And so that was able to stop a lot of the unnecessary response because the sergeant in the building could say, I'm sitting at that situation, I'm good, just assign it to me. And they can cancel all the other cars. It has greatly increased, you know, the, the, or I'm sorry, decreased the responses that, that go to the buildings. I don't have the numbers and data on responses to the schools, but I would guess that it is lower than what it was three years ago for sure. I don't know if Dalton has any idea on that or not.
I, I can't speak to that, but we can speak to when incidences are occurring at the school, things get handled quickly. So if we're talking about lower level stuff, like a parent needs a report, instead of coming to our lobby and waiting for six hours because we have 630 people, our CEO's in the school and does the report. Also, when there's a fight or something breaks out, they're right there. Jeff, you could probably speak to this, but when we had a weapon at the high school, I believe our response time was less than 30 seconds before the officer was there handling that weapon and taking care of that situation. And something like that would never happen without this program.
I'm just, I, I just wanna add that, those are some, some, some great stories. But from my perspective, I can actually see that difference in the way that the, the relationship with the school district and the police department is changing. I can say personally, prior to Superintendent Soler, I met with Superintendent Spring quarterly. And now I probably speak to Superintendent Cotto weekly, if not daily. Our, our partnership has, has, has improved dramatically and that we've given more of a voice to the school district and everything that happens. Doesn't even matter if it's at the school, it could be after school, if it involves a student in this district. We, we're giving a voice to the school district, we're, we're responding to them. And I, I think there's a benefit right there in itself that, you know, we, we don't want to arrest a, a, a child if we can work some, something else out in order to get to them, get them help.
Thank you. And then I'm gonna ask alternatively too, because I didn't, I have not heard anything negative about this program until word got out that we were gonna be having this conversation. So I just wanted to ask people who are present in the school daily, what are you hearing in terms of students seeing police officers every day in the school, teachers being around them? Have you heard anything or have seen any behavior that might indicate that these officers are making anyone feel less safe?
No, I've, I've not heard that feedback directly. No, I've seen an improvement in communication, daily communication, weekly and monthly. Building leaders are making some of that informal outreach, best responses to crisis, emergency situations, things that I think Chief Clifford alluded to accessibility. So it's, it's shifting from reactive to proactive. That's more of the things I'm hearing. On top of some, some fun stuff, reading books to kids, hallway presence, basketball games, just the engagement that's sort of loose and fun and not necessarily attached to a crisis or a, a corrective need. I also think when it comes to servicing the whole child, when incidents happen at 10 o'clock at night, we're aware in the morning time, our social workers are aware in the morning time, and they can follow up with students and say, I heard you might have had something not great happen last night, can you tell me about it? So the Handle With Care program is something that we started here. And basically, all we get is a student's name if they had some kind of police contact. And we just tell a state social worker in the building, hey, make sure you check in with that student today. And it has led to all kinds of information coming out. CPS has been involved in some cases. It's really, it's gone a long way to protect students. And, and so I think that communication wouldn't be happening if we didn't have the relationship that we have right now. I think it works both ways when there are situations going on where they might need some information from us as far as the buildings go and, and, you know, whether or not a student was in school today. Like we can help them out with things like that. And it's, it's a relationship that is, is beneficial for more.
Thank you. And my last comment is, I forget who it was that said, oh, I think it was Chief Burns, that said, helping kids learn how to take civil service tests, that is like 85% of the test is just learning how to take it. So I would actually encourage the district to go beyond that and not to, you know, have to put other tests in front of kids. But sometimes just that exposure and teaching the kids to slow down with these questions, especially when you're forming sentences, this isn't so much for you guys, just for the district. I think that is a, like a really, really good idea, whether it's for the, the police fire or another state civil service test.
And I think when it comes to removing barriers, I can tell you, you know, the one student that Lieutenant Dalton spoke about, the graduate who was, you know, she's 21 now and she came to us for help because she passed the test, but then she failed the fitness test. And she said, how do I get past that? And, and so they're able to help coach, here's what you gotta practice for that. And, and I just think that that type of class, you know, one of the physical requirements of, of the civil service test, you know, for fire and for police. And I think just being able to help coach those things is really, you know, that's gonna lead to some great careers for people.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, it might, you might be happy to hear, at Lead Club we do that, we give, I give the civil service test, practice test in the club. On the school trip, the first thing we did in a day was give a civil service test or a portion of it.
Oh, that's cool.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda. Board Member Vivian, and then Vice President.
Chief, first, I just wanted to commend you and thank you for your responding with grace during this inquisition that this board meeting has turned into, so I appreciate you for that. Board Member Amanda kind of stole part of my question, so I guess maybe this will be directed towards W. Superintendent DiCaprio or Dr. Cotto. Ballpark, can you recall any complaints that you've received from students or from families indicating to you that they disliked, were in fear of, terrified of, had a negative experience with, were abused by any of our CEOs? Because I, I think that's a pretty, like a very colorful, you know, memorable complaint to have received. So, then like with one.
I can never quote, I cannot.
Even with all of the methods of communication that we have with families, telephone, email, let's talk.
I cannot.
Okay, thank you. My second question to that, of the incidents, Chief Clifford, that your officers have been involved in, in our schools, where they were not the first, if I recall correctly, they're not the first ones to respond, but they are there to assist our security officers, is that correct? So of those incidents that your officers have been involved in, how many of them resulted in a complaint against the police department for improperly handling the students?
First of all, I wanna just say that the school security team does an excellent job and they, they make our CEO's job a lot easier. But zero is the answer.
Okay. Thank you for that, I appreciate it. And I, last question and then I am done. Again, thank you so much. Not to relitigate what you are still currently investigating, but since that incident from the other night was brought up, in that moment, did your officers have any indication of who they were dealing with, was a 14-year-old child?
Well, what I do know is that they, they contacted school security officers who were on scene and so they had an identity of the person. But the fact that he was 14 didn't matter. If, if what was, what they If if what was, what they believed at the time is that he was in possession of a weapon, their job was to secure that weapon, based on the uh, really what's been going on in our society over the last couple of months. It's a huge concern of ours, um, you know, even this year, we lost a student to gun violence. It's it's a huge concern of mine right now, and it didn't matter what his age was, they were going to detain him and make sure that he didn't have a weapon on him.
Chief, thank you very much.
Vice President, um, so my question is going back to the previous contract, um, we agreed with six CEOs. From what I recall from previous discussions, we weren't able to fill all six positions, is that correct?
It was a staffing issue with the police department at the time, so yes, that's right.
And so we had, was it four?
We've gotten as high as five at this point.
At this point, okay. Um, and are the current CEOs that were in the previous contract, will they roll over into the new one? I know there's a lot of language in regards to the process of selecting the CEOs, will they?
So the police, and and they could speak to it better than I can, but they routinely bid when other positions become available in the department, and there are some more desirable uh, positions in the department, if, you know, for an officer other than just the school. But the school has become a pretty desirable location for some, um, because they enjoy the work and and, you know, it's, I think it's becoming uh, more common knowledge that it's a rewarding place to be, a lot of law enforcement is very reactive, it's part of that proactive. So I think, to answer your question, um, a couple of them are rolling over, but a couple have bid other positions in the police department. So we have had, as 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 recent as yesterday, an interview with another person who will be coming on board, a new CEO, uh, who replaces one that left to go to another position, so every time one leaves, we do have an interview process where Dr. Coto, myself, Lieutenant Dalton, we get together with that officer, have an uh, an interview, uh, to make sure it's compatible.
And then the last question, kind of tying that in, is if we're not able to fill all six positions, the contract remains the same as far as the the value, what we're paying globally?
So I think this contract includes language, and I may be wrong, but I think there's language in there that Terry Gulley had added in there through the attorneys, that every day that there's not six officers in the school, it subtracts a certain amount, so.
Okay, that's incorrect.
Thank you for asking that.
Board Member.
So, um, re- regarding the idea or or the concept or or the the current understanding that there are no reports from students or parents complaining, just because there wasn't a complaint made to the district doesn't mean that there's not complaints, right? We know that there's there's, and I'm just saying this in general, um, we have been working on our district feeling like a safe place where everyone can say what they feel and and feel as if they're being heard, um, and I imagine the chief as well is working really hard at making sure the community feels as if they can come to the police department and have their voices heard. But there currently is evidence because of what happened on Friday, the number of people that publicly stated the things that happened to them. And it's public because my life was public, and so the people that commented, it was a public statement about their interactions and the impact that happened to them. And saying that there's not a report from students or or parents about violence inside our building, I had reports of a child being slammed to the ground by a CEO officer inside our building. Now, whether or not that child complained about being slammed to the ground by a CEO does not negate him being slammed to the ground by the CEO, and that was brought to my attention by somebody out in the community, and as I believe there was like, um, you know, somebody was videotaping inside the school and that was shared around, so we can't sit here and say that nothing has happened or that no one has concerns or complaints, because we actually have evidence that at least one thing inside the district was reported by community members and that other things outside in the community have been reported by community members to someone they trusted. It's not to, for us to pretend like, oh, well, everything's fine, I mean, the chief didn't say that the complaints are zero, they've gone down, and I'm glad they've gone down. We don't know if they've gone down because there's been less abuse or if people gave up on complaining because nothing happened. I sat on the civilian police review board, and the reason I left is because there was no power. I hope that something has changed with the civilian police review board, but as it stood, it was a rubber stamp on whatever your investigation was. And so this is not an inquisition, these may be uncomfortable and difficult questions and comments, but it is our due diligence to make sure that we are providing a safe environment for our children and staff and that we address these concerns directly, because if we don't, then we're not doing our due diligence and our job and our responsibility. So I guess my my only question is, um, given the fact that we as a district have a vision and mission and policies that relate to restorative practices and harm reduction, and that children are children, and our policy on ICE coming into our building. The idea that the chief of police said sometimes children act like adults is already concerning because that is not our position, our position is children are children, and the contract says that there's going to be an investigator to look for criminal activity. What is the contract between the Schenectady Police Department and ICE? And is that going to be a conflict of interest, given that we said this is going to be a safe haven for our children regardless of their immigration status?
We don't work with ICE.
You have no contract with ICE right now?
We do not, we do not work with ICE.
I do wanna speak to the language regarding investigator, had to do with the fact that when our CEOs engage in any type of investigation, it could be one initiated by a student, they have to then go to their youth advisor or their YAB, uh, which is the
Youth Aid Bureau.
Youth Aid Bureau, sorry. So when they go to YAB, it takes longer to get a detective involved, it's a whole different thing. This would allow them to investigate everything right within the building and and really very little, um, going outside of the school, um, to go to the department. So the goal of the investigator being part of the six was so that they could become more self-sufficient without having to rely on, you know, if they find an item in the school that doesn't belong in the school, they don't have to wait for people to respond necessarily to come and collect evidence or do it, like they wanna be able to do a little bit more in-house things like that.
So our building's become a hub?
Not really a hub, I mean, I think that we're opening freshman academy, um, I think that we
Call of questions. Can we do that, call of questions?
May I have a second?
Second.
I apologize, I did want to finish.
I don't wanna hold this up.
No, no, no.
I think it's it's logical that we'd want, we would want an officer in the freshman leadership academy because we have one in each middle school, it's approximately the same size, we would wanna maintain our two at the high school, so the six makes more sense now than ever, um, to have freshmen, and I think being self-sufficient helps everybody because we don't have that waiting period going on, and and so I think that it it's all just a goal of being more efficient, um, and I think when we look at numbers, we say, how many kids have been arrested and how many, that was never what it was intended to do, and it's not what it's doing, and and I think that, um, the investigator more often than not ends up dealing with a community issue that gets brought into the school, and and I think that's, you know, and again, if one of the officers wants to speak to him, that's that's kind of the idea behind it. The intent, as far as ICE goes, to my knowledge, there still hasn't been any agreement with ICE, and I think we we still stand on our policy of, you know, people would be directed in all cases, and and that's important.
I didn't have another question.
Okay, so call the questions second so we can move on. So I do wanna thank everyone, I wanna thank you for, this is the democratic process, right? I mean, people have a lot of strong, especially around this nationally, we have, many people have strong, um, feelings about this, and those feelings are also valid, um, but we also uh, understand the importance of having this conversation, and it's wonderful that you were here to engage in the conversation with us, I know it's tough, but we appreciate it. And I thank the board members for, you know, asking the questions, but I do wanna remind the board, when we're having conversations, it's questions, right? The comments can come later, just because we wanna ensure that all board members have an opportunity to talk, so when SEI also presents, I'm just gonna remind the board to start with questions first, to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to talk, then you can add the comments to it. So thank you very much, okay, thank you, and we're going to proceed with the vote. I make a motion to approve the public services contract, may I have a motion? Thank you, Vice President, second, thank you, Amanda, Board Member Amanda. Yeah, we are done. It has been moved in second that the board approved the public services resolution. Given the significance of this item, we will proceed with a roll call vote. Board Clerk Michelle will now begin with the roll call. Each board member, please state your vote as yes, no, or abstain, and remember again, abstain only if you are connected personally, intimately with the police department, so roll call, please.
Thank you, I will now conduct the roll call vote. Please respond with yes, no, or abstain when your name is called. Alexandria Carver?
Abstain.
Nolani Etienne? Kathy Lewis?
Yes.
Jamaica Mile?
No.
Vivian Parsons?
Yes.
Bernice Rivera?
Yes.
Amanda Sponable-Pantala?
Yes.
This concludes the roll, roll call vote. The vote is four to two with one abstain.
So the motion carries with four in favor, two opposed, and one abstention to approve the PSC contract. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the drone contract. So next director, he's gonna return again, of safety and climate, Jeff Russo, welcome, and Deputy Superintendent Joe, encore, and will now provide an overview of the drone contract.
No.
So, can you pull up the agreement? I did not prepare a presentation.
Oh, and before you begin, because I have to be transparent with this, the reason why Alex, uh, Board Member Alexandria Carver abstained because she works for the city of Schenectady.
So, I'm back to you, because I'm sorry, I didn't realize what we're presenting on this, um, I I'm gonna go right to it.
That makes no, that makes no sense. New information.
But yeah, this is related to Chief Clifford actually referenced it in in the first presentation, uh, around the public service agreement. Choosing Central Park Middle School, the roof to host a drone, uh, for, it walks through the reasoning within the agreement, based off security, there is some added benefit to the school just to assist in emergency traffic situations, anything kid or community related. And it walks through, uh, a lot of it is legal issues between, uh, our our lawyer and police clerk, but it really is meant to to help the police, and the the location is key because obviously Central Park is the center city, so that's the biggest thing I can give you, so it's off the cuff, but we'll take any questions.
Chief can probably come up and just share, I think you've been instrumental in providing that.
We entered into a contract a little over a year ago with a company to to deploy drone as a first responder. And what the first location we have is at the police department right across the street. We need a second location for the second drone to properly cover the entire city. Central Park Middle School, that general area up there is ideal, specifically because Central Park Middle School sits at one of the highest points in the city. So what we would be looking to do is to place a nest, a drone nest, that sits on top of the roof, it opens up when it's deployed, and then when the drone returns back, it closes, and it, we'd also want to install an antenna to provide the proper connectivity for the drones to fly. Purpose of the drones, as I explained when I came the first time, is to to get situational awareness on the scene as soon as possible and report back to officers on the street what they're, what what's being seen, so that they can properly, uh, respond to the situation. Many times, uh, being able to respond, um, with more information, uh, is safer for both the police officer and for the citizen involved, should there be one.
I think it falls in line with cameras, radios, other things that the police have placed on district buildings before to, um, aid in public safety.
So I move to approve the drone contract.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you get to ask questions?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
Okay, so last Wednesday night, after our board meeting, on my street, both ends of the street were blocked by police officers because my husband was trying to get home. I went out in the driveway, may not have been the smartest thing to do, but it was midnight and I was curious, so, anyway, there was a drone. But, and and it was, it was down at the rugby end of the street from the, from the, uh, high school. So what notification is given to residents or what, what do you do? There were no sirens, the police didn't leave till like one thirty in the morning, I know that because they drove down the street. I I'm just wondering how that relates to having two in the city and whether that was something, you know, I I never heard anything about it, so I just wondered.
So so these drones as first responders, they do have lights on them, red, red lights.
Red lights, it was red light.
Easily identifiable, um, not that you'll be able to get close enough to see one, but they are marked with our markings on them. And although we have not started it yet, it is our intention to, as soon as able, to put a transparency dashboard on our website where you'll be able to see every deployment of the drone, where it went and for what reason. It'll it'll show a breadcrumb of 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 it being tracked for each deployment.
So this was not a police, uh, drone, as far as you know, or, or just curious?
I I don't know about these.
Because because the police were really on the, on both ends of the street.
Most likely it was.
If police use drones, this is a drone program that is a patrol function, as opposed to like the police drone team that operates drones from the ground.
So this was something.
So it could have been a police drone that was operated from the ground.
That's possible. If it was nighttime, it most likely was being operated
Oh, it was midnight.
From the ground, because currently we're only operating them during the daytime.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the, your first statement there.
Currently, we're only operating the drone as a first responder and during the daytime.
Oh, okay, so at night it was something, something.
Lieutenant just said it was a barricade subject call, so it was most likely a tactical drone. Whatever that means. Somebody that refused to come out of their house. That's what I thought, it might be.
Board Member Jamaica?
Uh, you said that Central Park Middle School, um, is at one of the highest points in the city. What are the other points that are at an elevation that you would have been able to put the the nest in?
It it is the highest part of the city, and then the building sits on top of the highest part of the city, so it's it's the ideal location. We looked at a couple other ones, um, like St. Clair's Hospital, that wasn't really an option because of the technology that already sits up there, interferes with with, uh, the connectivity, um, there really weren't that many other options. We 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 looked long and hard and the, because of the school district having so many buildings, that's why we gravitated to look and see what other assets we had, and that was it.
So you're saying there weren't that many other options, and this is the highest point, but what were those other options other than Ellis? If you recall?
Ellis, St. Clair's, um, I mean, I looked at a lot of different places, I I didn't necessarily make phone calls on them, I looked at Home Depot, but I did, I just, like, I looked at almost every building I could think of. I thought about the fire tower over near the golf course, it turned out to be a little bit too small, golf course didn't have a flat roof. We looked at every city building that we could, we thought about Foster Avenue, but it wasn't in the right lo- location. Yeah, just everyone possible, I I drove around the city a lot looking at it.
Last question, um, I'm glad to hear there's going to be a dashboard for transparency. What else are you planning to do, if anything, to, um, assuage the fears and concerns around surveillance and an increase to policing and overpolicing, which is already a concern in some of our most marginalized communities?
Uh, we have a policy in place, uh, that requires the the drone to be operated in a manner that does not have the camera looking down as it's flying, unless it's for, unless it's needed for the reason it's going there, um, and then when it returns to base, it also lifts the camera up. And again, the breadcrumb is going to show what we were deployed for and and then where we went. So there's no concern that on the way back, we're 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 looking at neighborhoods, peering at people. And and we've been out in the community talking at it at neighborhood meetings, um, just, you know, we've, uh, you know, we've been in contact with the ACLU and YICLU, um, and been in compliance with with what they've asked. And, um, you know, we're just being as transparent as we can for anybody asking questions.
Any further questions from the board? So I move to approve the drone contract resolution for adoption. May I have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda. Okay, on the second, Board Member Kathy. All in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, the motion to approve the drone contract resolution is approved. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda items. The consent agenda item includes items considered routine and approved together in one motion unless board members request that an item be removed for separate discussion and vote. Does anyone want a consent agenda removed? Hearing none. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items seven A through I? May I have a motion? Thank you, Board Member Kathy, second. Thank you, Board Member Alexandra. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, the motion to approve consent agenda items seven A through I carries. The next item on the agenda is the SEI design in Jacobs-Lidchase, and they will provide an update on the 2030 revitalization plan and bid of rewards. Welcome, Tom Lawson. Tom Lawson from Jacobs, Program Manager David Uche. From Jacobs, Assistant Program Manager Matthew Schools and SEI Senior Principal. Welcome.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
So Matt Schools from SEI, he's gonna lead and present.
Yes, sure.
Tom Dave or...
Tom Dave.
You're not coming back up again, Joe?
No, no.
Oh, yeah.
All right, we can, we'll keep this fairly brief. I'll let us dive a little deeper into the questions pieces, but we wanted to give you a general update on where we are because we always have construction going on, we always have design and permitting phase jobs going on. And we're right on the cusp of a couple of things happening, so it's a good time for an update and hopefully you've been in some of the buildings that we've been working on and talking about. I'll get going. I overclicked. So the agenda, so revitalization plan overview. We've, of course, broken this large project into several phases, and we have overlapping essentially of all the phases. I'll get into that a little bit. But whenever we, you know, we started a project, we started the project off, and really we were fast-tracking the first couple of projects. And we worked with the State Education Department to get off the ground running, and they were instrumental in being able to help us plan and permit a couple of the first projects that are now in construction. But as we have project in construction in the background and in, I guess, the foreground, working with the district, we are designing the next phases. And as we construct, we're designing, and it continues to follow along, so it's not just, you know, design, bid it, build it, and then design the next thing, bid it, build it. So it gets complicated, and there's a lot to keep track of. So we'll go through that, but we'll highlight the three phases that we can touch on now. There are future phases beyond phase three, so that still won't be the end. We have some sort of side work with kitchen upgrades that we can update you on. And recently completed projects, of course, we've been in around the buildings. There's some facilities and spaces looking pretty fresh and really promoting what we want to do with the district, which is take some of the maybe forgotten spaces and really make it a place to be proud of for the students in the district. All right, this is a graphic. This funny graphic is one that we've carried on, I think, through before the referendum vote. But it's a visual to show a little bit of what I was describing before, where we're overlapping a lot of the work, the planning and the construction overlaps. This was the initial thought, and it should be highlighted that lots of moving pieces happen, and some things definitely have already shifted, but the concept remains the same. And the amount of work that we do and the amount of time, even though some things will ultimately shift, all of it still happens in the timeframe on the plan. And we have a finite amount of money that the voters approved. That's all the money that we can allocate to the project, so there is no overspending. We get what we get, and we have to be smart with each building, with each school that we do. I won't get granular into this, but you can see the freshman leadership academy and Van Corleere were amongst the first. Fulton School was used as a swing space, which means in order to do construction at the pace we're doing construction and at a lower cost, we have to empty schools or portions of schools. That is a huge advantage that cannot be understated. And it's very well known that it is a disruption, and it's a Herculean effort to move people out and move people in. But it is a huge advantage to each dollar we spend. We get more contractors coming to Schenectady, we get more for our money out, and we get more competition. And that's based on being able to build, when we're in construction phases, being able to build not only during an eight-week process that you see a lot of other school districts having to build in. We build all year long because we can, because the district has afforded us the ability to get in these buildings and turn them over to contractors, which that is huge and is a key piece of our success. And as we move forward, we're always planning for the next phase. And the ability for the next phase to be successful is based on some of our previous phases and future phases sort of domino effect into making space to, again, allow more contractors in. So I wanted to at least state that as we go through some of the specifics. So phase one, as I mentioned, the freshman leadership academy, moving out of the high school. Obviously, the Steinmetz building was vacated, and we've been building that work, and we'll show you some pictures in a minute. That, and I can speak to both of these projects, the Van Corleere Elementary. When we get to the final stages of construction and you see what's happening and the condition of the spaces, it can be alarming. But there is so much work going on, there are so many, sort of, there's constant issues and problems that we were constantly running to solving and moving forward. So this, you know, this six, seven, eight week stretch, it can look pretty ugly, but we always do a good job buttoning things up. This, because in this project, we've had, you know, a good, long, open construction season. We're seeing early summer now, we're seeing spaces that are ready to turn over, they're looking great. And I'll show you some pictures of that. But I'll keep moving here on phase one. So at the freshman leadership academy, this is a view, we're obviously relocating a main entrance to integrate new secure entryway for the public into the school. This is the exterior of this building, and the block that it's on are kind of a big deal because we can, you know, we came into this project hoping to do as much as we could, and actually, the first, you know, the first bid we had was successful and a little bit loved. So we've added work along the way to maximize what we can spend on this building. And one of the real victories in this building is having been able to do the site work with a turf field. We're doing parking, bus drop-off, all sorts of things. And I just heard that the city is actually paving the entire block around. So most of what you'll see on the ground at your building will be new because of the efforts of the project. And then that's, you know, that whole area is going to be a huge change. And when you, you know, when you can go through what is a pretty hard process to go through these construction projects, but then leave and it's really a substantial change, that's a pretty rewarding thing that you can do for the community. So that's the entrance, a canopy that's being finished with some nice bright colors. We always, with the entrance to the building, we like to tell people that it's the entrance without having to tell them. So that's a theme with schools that seem to have, you know, six, seven, eight entrances. We want to really be able to communicate through design those types of things. So some of the interior spaces we can share with you, and these are, you know, these are looking like, as you can see, these are looking like brand-new building-type spaces. And, you know, it's all renovation, which is, of course, much more cost-effective than knocking a building down and building a new one. But to be able to do this in your historic buildings is fantastic.
It's a 105-year-old building right there, it's being renovated.
So more space in the freshman leadership academy. We're touching a lot of spaces, it's a large building, and there's, you know, there's a set amount of money that we set at the beginning of the project that could be spent on these buildings. So, you know, we're stretching as far as we can go, so we are, we're touching a lot of classrooms. We're touching cafeterias and kitchens and all the essential functions. Obviously, to create a freshman leadership academy, which is a new concept for the district, and make it seem like you're walking into a new building that has its own identity. So a lot of work has been put into that. More spaces, some of the corridor spaces, all existing space, we're not, you know, we ain't creating any of this, but it's all being cleaned up, it's all intentionally being addressed. Some exciting bathrooms. And you'd be surprised, and this is, I don't know what this says about the industry, or my choice of profession, but I hear the most positive feedback in a school, it's a point of pride when, you know, taking care of bathrooms is taking care of students. I don't know why it is, but it is a thing.
It's such a necessity.
And I mean, there's bathrooms everywhere, and they're easy to forget. I think that's, I think that's why. They're easy to forget, and they quickly get old, so, but...
Just a fun fact on the bathroom thing. At Simon's, every toilet room was renovated, every single one. So there's not one that was left behind.
That's a big deal, and they get left behind.
And there are new fixtures.
They are big money to, you know, it's expensive for small spaces. So it's, these are great ones. This is exterior courtyard views, hardscape. That's quite a change from what you would have seen a year ago. And then this, which was frankly kind of a surprise toward the end of the project, to be able to not only award it, but to have the contractor deliver it as quickly as they delivered it. And again, we see the broad strokes have been done, but, you know, finishing and polishing, the finishing touches does take a little time. But we're getting to that finish line, and it's exciting, hopefully it's exciting for the community to start seeing these things take shape, you know, right in front of you. Because when you, you know, switch a boiler in the building, you really need the boiler, but nobody gets to say it. Switching over to Van Corleere, this is an exciting piece for the facility's maintenance. We put heat in the ramps to the new entranceway, it's heat tubing in the concrete. This is a, this is a big deal if you work and live around these buildings. And it's a huge safety thing. It's totally worth it, and it makes it a lot safer. And frankly, not spreading salt and sand over your entire property will make it last longer.
This is actually on a handicap ramp as well.
So of course, there's a large addition to parking there. Everybody, you know, everybody needs more parking on these tight streets. Don't talk anymore about that.
Less impact on neighborhood.
Interior space renovations, as you can see, we're, we've, the next month and a half is a long month and a half in the construction industry for school districts. This is looking great at this moment in time, and, you know, it's right around the corner. So again, visions of classrooms, we touched a lot of classrooms in Van Corleere. We, I mean, the basement would be, or the ground level of the building would be unrecognizable from what it was based on program changes and kitchen, cafeteria.
I think Kathy was asking where the pool was.
Yeah, and you had said that it would be occupiable July 17th, which is next, which is tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, occupiable but not complete. I don't know whether occupiable was my word or your word, but yeah, okay.
So just to clarify that, on the 21st, we've been working with Mr. Dangler, Director of Facility, and the 21st is the date when the administrative areas open up. So principal and key staff, that's key staff can get in there. And then the date we're targeting for staff is the 18th of August. So that gives us a little bit more time, but still three to four weeks here, and that's when we start seeing more people moving in. But just one last comment there, there's currently, over at the freshman academy, we're currently working with Mover Shop, which we work with the government on to get that in a bid, get their service. But they are currently moving into the third, second, and first floor right now. They're already in there with furniture over at the four-story portion of the Steinmetz project. And we are working to vacate the gym probably tomorrow, leaving only district remaining items in there that will be dispersed from there.
Yeah, this is not a project that, I mean, many projects, you know, we would leave Mr. Dangler with the last three days before school starts to clean and polish floors. This is, this is a huge effort. I mean, the amount of, the amount of people and objects that need to move, it's, you know, it's the entire school. So it's a huge effort, and as Tom explained, the move plan was something that wasn't a topic starting a month ago. It was a topic six months ago, just to get ahead of the planning that's necessary to move so much around. So there's a, there's a lot happening in the background and at all times. So again, pretty exciting, new spaces at the elementary school with the kitchen, serving, cafeteria. We're excited to get the opportunities to make these kinds of impacts and create the vision for, you know, we're just at the beginning. We want to set a precedent in a standard of care that we can carry for years and years through buildings and buildings here. Onto phase two. So phase two, as I was saying in the beginning, while we're under construction and having construction, we're designing. Phase two is projects that, you know, have been designed for the past year, and we're getting right to the edge, and we're, and you've probably heard some of the planning. We're starting to plan, we've got, in the high school in particular, we've got, with the freshmen having moved out, we've got a little bit of flexibility with the amount of space we can work in. But this first high school project will be the biggest, and it is by far the most complicated and the most amount of effort needs to go in. And it sort of sets the course and sets the tone for the rest of the high school to fall in place. And I hope the rest of the phases in the high school, because there will be four phases, will be much easier comparatively. But we're right on the edge. Even to vacate the center section of the high school, we have to fill every corner of the rest of the building. So even though there's some less students in the building, we have pushed and pushed and pushed to find the spaces and squeeze the population down into the building. and pushed to find the spaces and, and squeeze the population down into the building that's left. So that's a, a big piece of the effort. Right now, the high school and let's see, the middle school are both in the permitting phase, which means we've submitted drawings to the state. They're reviewing the high school as complicated as it is. It's been a long process. We're right on the edge of it. So we were actually hoping when we heard about this board meeting happening, that we would have high school bids. Because of the complications with permitting and working with the state, we are, we're pushing that and our plan is modifying a bit, but nothing is really lost. Jacobs is making sure we're staying on the, the final end date to, to be done with that project as planned originally. WC Kane Elementary School is another complicated story. It's a, it's a new ownership acquisition for the, for the district. The quick, quickly on the story behind the building and what we want to do there, because that building and that property has land to actually expand, utilization study for all of the elementary schools district wide is that you're short about 20 classrooms to really be able to deliver the education on the level, you know, and, and have the amount of community engagement opportunities and spaces and support spaces for students to make equity across the district. We really need to try to get 20 classrooms added to the Kane Elementary School campus. We are in a continuous process of securing enough funding to be able to do enough meaningful work in that school. So that is ongoing. We are, we have designed, we have cost estimated, and now we are working to secure more funding than the state would usually give to you. So that's, it's not unprecedented, but it's not a common thing. So it's taking, it's taking effort and we're working with the district to do everything that it takes to make that successful. But for that reason, for the reason of the financial complications, we are in design on that, but it's not one that will go into construction in the 25, 26 school year. It, it should be following and starting by the beginning of the 26, 27 school year. Mont Pleasant Middle School, almost seems like the commissary kitchen, almost seems like a project that's happening off to the side. That's to create a central kitchen to serve all of the district's buildings. There's, aside from some phasing complications and finding homes for anybody that's down in that area right now, that project is moving forward and we expect permitting to go smoothly and quickly over the next couple of months. Have to anticipate when I'm going to start talking and push the button. All right. Still with the, the phase two, this is Selecty High School from the Plaza. And again, I mentioned at the, at the Steinmetz School where we're creating a new main entrance, you, you've got to make some sort of move so you see main entrance, like an overt one. So on that long flat facade of the building, we're creating a node there, a visual marker. This will not be the main entrance for students to be bust into and flow through the main security of the building. That will remain where it is today, although it will be enhanced. This will be your, your during the school day controlled entrance where we have a secure entrance that's built specifically for that purpose, for visitors and late arrivals. So as we go through the design process, so we've been in the design process for quite some time, and as you get to the end of the design process, you start talking about materiality and, and what the spaces look like. So as part of that process, we have created renderings that I'll show you now. So these are, these are images of the design that, that we created based on the, the materials and we, we show them to the district stakeholders to make decisions on colors and feel and how things will look. So see, these are some examples. This is a, a view of the, that main entry that we were seeing from the outside in the last slide. These are some of the spaces. So with the, with the reimagination of the central piece of the high school, if you can imagine, all of the, the wings or learning community areas converge into this one space. So we've, what we wanted to do from the beginning was set up a, a series of, of sort of corridors and passages that makes wayfinding a little bit easier and it gives highlights to all of the learning communities that do converge on the space. So the, you know, the humanities and business might be in their own wings, but as the, as those wings interact with the core of the building, we bring some of those programs in and everybody that's crossing through the center area of the building gets a glimpse into what those things are. If it's business, there's a bank. The, so obviously STEM will be closed, we'll have, so we'll have a lot of, a good amount of glass, good amount of visibility in these central areas. And we created these, these renderings to convey the idea of the concept of almost a streetscape. So as you're, as you're traversing the building, you can get a glimpse into sort of what is going on in other learning communities. And, and the idea behind that is to, to promote it, to do some, some branding and advertising for what's happening and what exciting things are, are being done. So this is an idea of that quote unquote streetscape concept. This is a, as part of this, we would have a new library space with integrated learning spaces. This is a, a view of that design today. This is a salon space. So we've, we've seen a lot of local precedents for salon spaces and, you know, we want to make this the real deal. We want, we want to, to give students the, the real feel and, and have that experience. So there's a, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into, you know, making these things, these spaces, working spaces that, that seem like the, the trade that a student could be interested in. So at, at Mont Pleasant, I mentioned the, the kitchen project. This is an exciting plan, but essentially in red, you have your, your base kitchen functionality. This is just, it's like a school kitchen, but it's huge. So there's lots of cold and frozen storage. We have to locate central receiving and all the, the program that's necessary to, to make the kitchen run and be able to serve the whole district. So this design is freshly gone to the state for permitting. So we're, we're in the planning with Jacobs to kick this one off and, and start the phasing, the construction.
Duplicating, it's in blue.
Oh yeah, duplicating, central receiving, and then the, the red is the kitchen function.
Two loading docks, locations, one north and one south.
Yeah, I mean, we had to, we had to, I mean, lots has been discussed, I think probably for 10 years or more with a central kitchen for the district. But this, being in Mont Pleasant with its location, the space it has, the, the functionality needed for, for the kitchen, for like loading docks and access, that was a great space. The big deal is, is essentially kicking people out of those spaces. Unfortunately, unfortunately, facilities always gets, always gets the boot. But Brian's been doing pretty good with it. All right. Phase three, this can be quick. This is, this is what's next. So this is what you would expect to be, starting to be discussed with the folks in the buildings, in the school district, the high school, we have to move on to athletics, humanities, business, and to some extent perhaps the, the arts wing. Humanities right now, right now is earmarked. So those conversations will start with the stakeholders to program those spaces and renovate those spaces because we want to take care of the, the whole school and not just a small part of it. Central Park Middle School, again, the planning, the planning is starting right now. The behind the scenes planning is that it's much, much, much more difficult to vacate a middle school and turn it over to contractors. So Central Park stands to potentially be a multi-phase, sort of longer drawn out middle school construction as compared to anything else we do. But we're doing all the creative planning that we can possibly think of and the district putting their efforts in to explore all the options. So that's a, that's where we're at with that project. And then the next elementary school in the sequence that would follow Kane right now is Howe. And right now, that's Howe because while Kane is still under construction, we have space constraints in the elementary schools and we can't swing all of your elementary schools because of their size to a building like Fulton. But once Kane is constructed and we can move more students in that school, the doors come wide open to do your larger elementary schools with construction phases. So right now, Howe is, is going to overlap with Kane, I think, in the construction years.
So whether it's in construction, whether it's in design, or whether it's in pending, you know, permitting, going into permitting or design, I mean, that's eight projects you just saw there and that are happening simultaneously in various.
And then there's this one. Kitchen upgrade.
And there's another one.
This is, this is the second part, is the, the kitchen upgrade side project that, this is the part that's not done yet. This is again in permitting. I don't want to, I don't want to bore you with too much minutia, but based on the existing Pleasant Valley building, adding a kitchen and cafeteria expansion is extremely difficult with the building code. So we've been working diligently for quite some time to get state variances to, that translate to the state education department being able to allow the building to go forward. We're again very close, just like with the high school and other projects and permitting. So this one, again, is one that we're planning, the logistics of what happens to the playground at the end of this and all sorts of things. Because the addition is obviously taking up more of your site at Pleasant Valley. We should be coming close to the end here. Recently completed projects. So this is the, the fun part that hopefully you've been out and seen. We waited quite a while for the banners to go up behind the bleachers at, at Mont Pleasant, but they are there and it's a real photo, not a rendering. Of course, the fields hopefully getting utilized. The concession stand has been wrapping up and we should be talking about ribbon cuttings in the near future. So we do want to celebrate as projects get completed. We want to share those with the community. We want to have the transparency. We want to celebrate these wins and we want to make sure people know that we're, you know, that these facilities are available. So looking forward to that.
Already talking about possibly as well, but they're opening, if you will, the, the new freshman academy.
Yes.
And then hopefully followed by Van Corleone soon after.
Any questions, board members? We'll start with board member Baby and then board member Kathy, board member Jamaica.
So I'm going to have really it's a question, then a comment, then a suggestion. So the lighting situation in classrooms and in offices, what has it been decided to be? Like what kind of lighting is being used, regular LED lighting?
Yeah, you, typically what, what we're putting in classrooms is LED lighting. And our rule of thumb, since we've been putting LED lighting in classrooms for the last several years as they threaten to discontinue all other forms of lighting, is to make sure because the LED lighting, when you put it in, seems like it's twice as bright as, as the old classroom was. But what, and what, but we're not trying to make it bright. We're trying to meet the same lighting minimum requirements that the state has had for years and years. It's just effective now. So we do put dimmers on the lights, even though, because everybody has a different opinion of how much light is enough essentially.
Respectfully, Baby, I'm going to ask just the questions and then we'll come back to comments.
Oh, look.
So I think it was board member Kathy, then board member Jamaica, and then board member Alexandria.
Back, back to the bank. SED was having problems getting, getting to approving these plans. And there was, we could pay for faster turnaround from SED. What, what has happened with that whole environment? Have they corrected their situation or how are we getting these approvals? I haven't heard anything about this.
So, so our, there's a story behind it. Our rule of thumb in Schenectady is that we are willing to pay to get an expedited review and we have been paying to get expedited reviews because it is, it is, becomes a no brainer, certainly financially, that if you can get in and out of SED and you can start construction now, it's much better than losing nine months and then paying escalation over that nine months. The system at SED that facilitates the expedited review existed several years ago and it was working and then they canceled it. And then last year it came back again and it's like they're learning to drive again. So it hasn't been, hasn't been seamless, but it's, it's still some advantage. The larger story for state education, it like last time has driven the review times for all projects down. And it's successful, but as soon as they think they're caught up, they get behind it again. We are not in the busy season right now. SED does not have a big backlog right now, but December 1st, the backlog will be back and the review period will be months and months and months again.
I guess my follow up question is how much, how much additional do we have to pay to get the expedited approvals?
I don't have the list with me right now, but there's a set amount based on the, the cost of your project. So it can be anywhere from 9,000 to 30,000. And you're in the 30 to 40,000 B range if you're doing a $40 million project.
Okay. And my.
Also, it's far less than escalation. We typically.
Oh yeah.
We analyze that together as a group and review it with Terry and Brian, the whole group. Dr. Goto, we don't, right now, we're actually, even though we expedited, I think the first two projects, I can't remember, we are not now expediting projects because things have changed. So the Mount Pleasant commissary kitchen project, the annex.
Right now, we're taking advantage of the.
Is not going in under expedited review.
Quicker route this time.
Kind of a dynamic thing and we're reacting to lead times by SED as they report them, because they do report them, and experiences that they've had on other projects, things like that, so.
My second question, that was the follow on before.
No, I think that was your third.
No, that was the second.
That was the second.
Second of all.
Okay, this was, okay.
Change orders. I, I don't see anything on change orders anymore. How are we doing change orders?
Yeah, I think Terry's going to work and SCI are going to work with you on that to bring you up to date on a few of those shortly.
Yeah, I, I assume certain change orders from certain size are coming to the board for approval and.
No, I, we haven't seen any in a long time. If, if at all with most of the people here. I mean, I remember them from the prior project.
Yeah, it's probably worth a, a total financial update because most of the, the money that has actually been spent has been through the bid process. So you, you've been, and technically for those first two projects, the Steinmetz projects and the Van Corleone project, the, the huge quote unquote change orders were completely publicly bid. So it's not technically a change order, it's a new bid and we're adding to the project, you know, to the tune of several hundred thousand dollars. So that's, that's where the big pieces have been.
So it's board member Jamaica, then board member Alexandra, then VP, and then I have a couple of questions.
My first questions and I wonder that I don't think is like substantive at all, but it's just me being curious. Central Park Middle School has had a number of renovations over the years. When I was in the school, it was a five through eight and then there were a number of years it was a K through eight and now we're six through eight again. Does any of the historical data of like the changes made to the building? Um does any of the historical data of like the changes made to the building help? Or is it kind of like, yeah, it just happened?
It would definitely be useful. We don't reject any information when we're in the planning phase. And the and that's where we are right now. We're starting that uh with Central Park. And we wanna we wanna hear the history. We wanna clearly not repeat any mistakes uh or false steps uh on a project. Um and we don't go in to Central Park as the architect having any agenda on what we wanna make it. We are here uh absorbing and listening um and hopefully to react in creative ways to solve your problems. So everything's on the table.
Okay, cool. Good to know. Lots of history in Central Park. Um the the next question uh regarding Kane, which which is is my heart, it's my entire heart. Um as you mentioned, uh a concern about funding. Um I'm not asking right now how much more is needed. I'm not. I literally am not. I'm I'm I guess I'm asking us if we've done any outreach to find potential private funding sources. That may be so inclined to so support such an initiative that's going to bring us to where we need to be as a district. I have ideas.
Okay.
Okay.
Definitely talk, but I mean, I think it's we I've been navigating some of that space and engaging in some of those conversations. But you know, looking at the MCA, which is the mass cross-exam of what we can do at the current time. And then, you know, as you shared, is the doubling of that. Then it's really getting to that point of being able to put a project in place that's gonna give us the ability to to increase the number of classrooms within that space. But if you've got some ideas around some other potential, but I am meeting with individuals and engaging in conversations around how to get support.
We're gonna try to help you get money.
Not gonna argue with that.
Board member Alexandra. My question is simple. Within all the renovations and all this wonderful stuff we have going on in Central Air and the buildings.
Yeah, I mean, that's that is it's on the forefront of um. Of all all projects that we wanna touch, we wanna push it as far as we can. And um.
Hey, Brian, do you wanna comment on that?
You wanna?
I think it's a less um organizational aspect, we talked about that. We're enjoying some of the um some of the efficiencies uh in-house and providing AC in rooms that weren't touched uh for this phase. But moving forward, we're looking at doing a little bit more, I think, um as far as building systems, though, installing larger systems. Our goal is to have Van Corleone and um freshman leadership to finally a hundred percent air conditioning when we open it.
Between the permanent systems and the district operating units in classrooms, we weren't able to do. In spaces we weren't able to do per- permanent systems and due to the the maximum cost allowance, so we had to work with it.
It would have been the boiler scenario, uh Mr. Schloss was speaking about, that nobody gets to see that it's necessary. So it was a decision early on in the.
Yeah, and and the way that air conditioning in schools is going to go for the next several years. Is unless the state follows up their mandates with more money to to support the schools in doing it. Um air conditioning the entire school is a is a huge thing. And um if we embarked on a project like this and said, I have to add air conditioning for the entire school. Your budget is going to be air conditioning. Um so what we've been doing every room, cause because we're not touching every every classroom in every building. Um we're we're pushing the money as far as it can go. But the what we're touching in, you know, in future designs will will be the air conditioned space that is permanent air conditioning. And then um your district and all the other districts are gonna sort of make up for the permanent air conditioning not being there. With with, you know, package units and temporary air conditioning to 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 get until the point that you can um pay for the permanent um systems.
In general, the I think it's fair to say that that um the current MCAs within this twenty thirty revitalization plan. Don't allow for a hundred percent conditioned systems in any of the buildings. So that's what we're faced with, you know, all these buildings would have to have triple the budget to be able or MCA to be able to approach.
Right, but it's safe to say that your long-term goal really needs to be integrating those systems. It's it's just can't.
So it's gonna be not only this.
It's difficult, if not impossible, to do all at once.
As you continue to get future funding and things like that, it'll be to upgrade, continue to upgrade systems and infrastructure to get all that.
Yeah, we address that in our policy um regarding keeping our schools cool.
Yeah, the last board meeting. It's also like a state regulation.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, this is purely logistical. Looking back at slide twenty-two for the high school. So I love that, well.
Do you wanna go back?
Oh.
For everybody?
But you don't have to.
It might take me an hour.
It might. Um I guess my question, you know, logistically is is I've seen that space, right? So you said that this was going to be for late entry secured entrance for like a parent, right?
It's the plaza side.
Back side of the building.
Yep.
Right, so.
Yes.
I consider it the front.
Yeah, I know, I do too.
I still consider it the front.
I do as well, but.
I didn't say, I didn't label it.
Yeah, this is front of the building, but um I can't. So I guess I'm just trying to understand because from the the ren- uh the rendering that we have.
Mm-hmm.
That space in the front of the school is very small. Um and this looks like we're going to kind of expand. So do you know, like, A, if there's anything that's gonna replace that space and then, or are you.
You mean the the property, the like the s-.
Yeah, so like.
Outside of the building you're talking.
Right, so I see like it just looks like it's the outside, but it does appear, and I don't know if you're overly familiar with the space. But where we currently would go to enter.
In the main entry.
At the main, yeah, like in the main entrance, there's like a separate door where you go for that.
So we've actually worked with Jeff on a lot of the security aspects of that. And then SCI Design is going to refresh that space.
They are.
Yes, so.
So this is.
Okay.
This renovate goes all the way through to the other side.
Where the.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, interesting. And that's inclusive of like the halls that you were discussing, what you're designing.
Yeah, this would be a lot easier with a a plan to show you.
Okay.
Or a diagram. But yeah, the everything um the centerpiece of this picture, like the the far left is the auditorium. And then the hallway outside the cafeteria. And then everything else is the administrative offices. So the whole.
That's Dennis's office.
The whole width of the administrative offices is that center part that sticks out a little bit, but it's still one story. Um that entire area is being gutted all the way back to this full width, all the way back to the newer addition with the science classrooms.
Got it.
So that is a two phases of construction over a year's time uh to accomplish. But that is what we call ourselves, the core of the high school. It's where everything converges and it's it's kind of a landlocked section of the building. It's just lots of space. And this is the 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 entrance of um from the inside.
Right, okay.
So SCI Design and Designs to start off with the most difficult portion of the project. And then to farm it out and renovate little wings all the way around afterward.
This is how it had to start.
There can be isolation, all those other wings can be. This is right in the middle of everything. So.
Yeah, so the construction should be expected to be the most complicated of that hall. It will, I mean, but unrecognizable from what you see today.
That's true, that's true.
Um and fingers crossed, less kids will get lost on their way through this section of the building. Or whether it's intentionally lost or not.
So I have a question because um specifically Howe has a cafeteria in essence, right? Um I'm wondering with Howe and some of the other schools that have a cafeteria, like are dual cafeteria and. Um are we able, and I know you shared one example, but are we able to separate that? Because I know it takes a lot of time for the custodial staff to break it down, put it back up. I think Kane is another example. No, you.
Yes, no, it is.
Yeah, I'm wondering if there's any plan, yep, any plan to kind of separate, and I know there's not a lot of space.
Right, well, you know, given that the that that becomes a priority in in the planning of the school. It's possible. It's not without complications. The um we can usually justify to the state that that they should pay a little extra money for us to add to the building. Cause what you're talking about means we start pushing beyond the footprint of the building that exists. And we start building either a new gym station or a new cafeteria. And we've we've done a number of projects in the recent in recent years to justify those with the state. Um the caveat to the whole thing, even when you justify it to the state, the state, when you start building new buildings. The state is a little bit behind on what it costs to build that new piece of building. So uh they might fund a quarter to a third of what it costs to uh build a new gymnasium or a new cafeteria addition. Um and unfortunately, when we're out, when we start working outside, uh what the state will provide aid for. It becomes a burden directly on to the local taxpayers. And we have a small margin built in um for quote unquote non-aidable work to go into this project. Because we build all projects with a little bit of a buffer. Um but a project like that could easily go beyond the bounds of what the state would aid. And similar what we're talking about with uh with Kane. It's it becomes troublesome. We really uh we really have to be careful. But that doesn't mean we don't we don't pursue those things. So understandable that it's that it's a definite need.
Absolutely, thank you. And then my last question is actually to the district. I'm kind of rewinding. Cause I know that the high school is going to be blocked in many areas because of the construction. Do we have plans on bringing the students in so that they understand the layout of the um high school?
Yeah, we've been we've been engaging in conversation even on the start of the year. And it's something that we'll bring back to board. We'll probably have Dennis come in, provide a presentation around some of the thoughts.
Okay.
Uh just to make sure that the board is aware, but we are looking on doing some, I mean, orientation throughout the summer. But then even as we start the year, a different way in which to start, just to kind of build that overall. Community, you know, as students come in. So this start around the tenth grade as they come into that particular building and then the eleven and twelve graders.
Board member Kathy?
I think I've been around too long. Uh Howe was done before uh work was done on Howe. Sub- substantial work about within the last ten years. Um the whole wing was taken taken down um and re- re- constructed there. So what what exactly are we doing at Howe again?
That's that's a project that that we're embarked, we 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 will be and are not yet um starting the talks with the stakeholders in that building.
Okay.
So we are not, we're not there yet. So uh again, uh it's another one where we're we're open to.
As I said, since since we're seem to be coming back, and I know that the process has never ended in in school's construction.
Yeah. Because this whole process with this project started with the building condition survey.
Right.
We started with the laundry list of what needs to be quote unquote fixed. Uh when we actually, you know, and that represents, you know, what you could do. But that's, you know, that could be seen as putting Band-Aids on a whole bunch of hundreds of little things. Whereas when we when we actually sit down and we park on a building and and do the design. We start hearing about the larger conceptual items and the goals for the future of the school and curriculum. Uh and then that's where those those kind of facility needs and the curriculum needs end up blending together. Into what creates that project. So that's the expected next step there, Howe.
The um next question, the high school. Uh it you and I think you talked about the core areas, core area as you referred to it. It looks as if the hallways are wider. And that, of course, was one of the complaints that we've had is that hallways have been too narrow and people are congested and so on. Are they wider anyplace else or uh in the other wings or?
Right now, we're we're addressing the core with this project. Um you know, thinking ahead to the other wings, we were we are potentially quite limited in those these other wings. Because it's it's double loaded corridors, as we call them. It's a corridor, a classroom on this side, a classroom on this side. So to uh the the scope of those work in the other wings is to, you know, make them code compliant, safe. And and freshen them up, bring them up to twenty-first century standards. Um to move those corridor walls in those particular wings could be a huge a huge effort. But uh in some cases, perhaps not out of that question. I don't, uh when I see, you know, buildings with long monotonous corridors. I at least wanna um take, you know, go every fifty feet and and do something, open something up. And make it a little bit more welcoming rather than just a a straight long corridor. So maybe there is some compromise in there with some creative solutions based on, you know, what we know to be long, narrow corridors.
So the last thing that strikes me, you said um that there's the additional land around Kane and and so on. We also have quite a bit of land at Zaller. And I just point point that out. I didn't see, I haven't seen anything about Zaller and I know that it's pretty crowded as well. Elementary school, just maybe that's a question for the district more than otherwise, but.
I think this twenty thirty uh capital project, Zaller's not part, but I think we roll into another project as we close this.
I thought we were touching all schools, but I think it's a challenge.
Yeah, not all in this particular one, but we will have to.
Well, this, the the twenty thirty project could very well touch all the schools. But um there's definitely a, you know, a herd of elementary schools that are getting like maximum attention based on on what the state will allow. And then uh again, back to the building condition survey, if there's things, if there are things that are end of their useful life or, you know, breaking down and need to be addressed. Um then that's kind of a district-wide and we won't intentionally skip over a school that has, you know, a a boiler need or safety concerns. So in that case, uh because of that, Zaller would get touched at least with some project along the way.
And board member Vivian?
Um so really quick, going back to the HVAC systems, if we're touching them at all, have we um considered we even installing EPC lighting in the HVAC?
I'm not an expert on this, but I suspect from uh prior attempts with the state. That it's a system that they might not allow. I don't think they accept it as a whatever filtration or or cleaning system. That could, of course, change and we can we can definitely put research time into that uh to check it out. Do you know?
State is picking up something out in their facilities planning news letter that that is not acceptable.
Oh, my goodness.
That was a while back, but.
Once in a while it comes up and we try to uh try to approach them with it and we haven't been successful yet.
No, I appreciate it. And then I just wanted to go back. The reason I asked about the lighting, the LED lighting, is because, and I appreciate that they're being put on a dimmer. But sometimes even on a dimmer, the LED lighting can still cause issues for some students depending on what their their needs may be, right? Especially if they have auditory processing needs. So even with an LED lighting, um the faint buzzing, they can pick up on that very easily and then becomes a distraction. And an officer in a classroom setting, LED lighting can cause headaches. It can cause irritation. So I didn't know if we were going with your regular bright white LED lights or if we're even considering uh something of a warmer hue. Even that kind of LED lighting that simulates um daylight, so it's softer and it's not as visceral in the classroom setting.
Yeah, we'll we'll definitely um.
If I can project this real quick. So the buzzing that they hear sometimes is from the ballast in the light fish. And um LED lighting has no ballast in them, so they're actually quieter.
Yeah, they we should be solving more problems than they're causing with the buzzing and the flickering. But but I get it. I mean, we we talk about that a lot. Right now, um I work with a lot of districts that um are looking for solutions. And I think the industry will catch up um with the need for those solutions. Because what we we often see, uh you know, sh- cloth shrouds and things slung underneath LED lighting. I can't put those things in there because they're not code compliant and I can't recommend them. Um but right now, we do, we do do a lot of research on on what can be done to to filter um that that light. And and like I said, I think the industry will will get there and catch up.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking about the countless neurodiverse students that we have in the district. And they're impacted very differently and something as simple and minor as LED lighting could make or break their classroom experience. Um again, if it's too bright or if it's just too white, if it it could. Again, if it's too bright or if it's just too white, if it, it could be distracting. So that's why I had suggested considering something of a warmer hue. Not dark enough to put people to sleep, but it's something that's not as visceral as a bright white light.
Great, we'll definitely share that with our, with our engineers and see, see what's out there. We wanna, if it's out there and, and it can solve, it can sort of solve all the, all the concerns and, and we can definitely do that.
Thank you.
One advantage of having older buildings is they usually did daylight pretty well. They had a really good aperture for that classroom and they, there's calculations on how they did that back in the day. So they usually have a pretty good, at least one quite long window wall. Then we have shades, light controlling devices um, to manage that. But that's the one advantage of older buildings. A lot, a lot of classrooms are very well daylighted, especially van and stymets.
And board member Jamaica, I last question.
I, I, it's, I only have state comments, yeah, yeah, yeah. So y'all just keep talking about the windows. There are classrooms where, like, I've been in them and be like, are we good with leaving the lights off? And, and kids are like, yes, please. So um, appreciate that there's a reason behind that and I now know that history. But I wanted to say thank you um, for, for a number of things. One of the future freshman academy students is in the audience and was paying quite a bit of attention when you were talking about it. And I look forward to hearing her thoughts on the ride home. And I saw how her face lit up when you showed the bathrooms, because every building in our district has issues with bathrooms. That they're just, they're, they're horrible. I'm so glad that she was able to be here to, to see that. And when it comes to freshman academy, um, Stymets now looks like a school. So just thank you to everyone that was involved from taking it from a prison to pride. Because what that building looked like was not welcoming, it was not nurturing, it did not feel like a space where people want to be. And now it, it, I, I, I'm sure that my daughter's gonna enjoy walking through the halls and going to the bathroom. And, and then just lastly, thank you for giving more than three days for them to be able to clean up, really appreciate that.
More fine will do.
Thank you, board member Jamaica and all the board members. I do wanna say thank you as well, because um, board member Kathy and myself, we went to Stymets, Skala, the freshman academy. And I have walked in that school many times, I was substitute teacher many, many years ago there, and it has been totally transformed. Some of those classrooms I was mentioning to Ryan Dangler and to Dr. Coto, that I wish I had their classroom. The floors are gorgeous, the lighting, which is funny you said that to me, because I never used lighting when I was a teacher. I use natural light. It's, it's, it's beautiful and it really, it made me really happy to see the transformation. The same, I know this is, has happened, but Mount Pleasant Middle School, which that's where, is my heart. Just to see the field and how happy the students are to engage and play in the field and how happy the teachers, cause you mentioned the parking spaces, that's real. Mount Pleasant, I got so many emails, thank you for the parking, you know? And then myself, VP and Kathy, we also visited Van Corleer. And when we, when we visited, there was a lot of construction going on. But again, we saw the vision and many of, some of, the people that were there shared the vision. So I wanna thank you because it's doing a lot and the community has shared how excited they are about this. But also, and I know many board members have said this, we want a space where the students feel like, this is nice, you know? This is a great space to be in, so thank you, thank you for all your work.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're facilitators, us and our teams are facilitators. This is a, a whole community's worth of effort, definitely, and I can't take credit for it.
No, no, I, I thank all of you. And Brian, you're always there when we do the walkthroughs and you're there to help us through it. So thank you so much as well, and thank everyone else who's involved in it that I may not have.
Yeah, I do wanna say, with Matt and SCI Design, Tom, David, Jacob, and Chase, they are experts in the field. They're intentional with partnership and communication, they guide our team as, as, as true like partners, experts and just this vision about where we wanna go, but how we have to get there. So it's as fast as we can, but as slow as we need to, to ensure that the work is good quality and will stay to give our kids and our, our future students the best experience beyond it. Incredible partners, Brian's leadership and his team has, has uplifted that. And I do also wanna, just because they're here, the building, Stymets Freshman Leadership Academy, yes, it looks fire, it's amazing. But who's leading the building? We have Justin Lansley, uh, our, our new principal and assistant principal Case Kaiser, or I just wanted to recognize them. So now we got leaders in the building, we're opening up the building, so thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you. So um, the next item from unfinished business, we have no unfinished business. We have a second opportunity for comments from the board or the public.
I wanted to remind families that there is a Little League baseball clinic happening. Every Thursday by Coach Evans in the high school on the field, I've had an opportunity to bring my son and it's really amazing how the clinics and with the workouts and stuff they have for their children. So I just wanted to remind people to go out, there's still space um, for students six through twelve.
Awesome, thank you, board member Alexandra. Any other comments? Okay, the board will not enter an executive session, there's no further business to discuss. I'll ask for, all right, actually, we are adjourned, have a break.
Right, that's it.